Okay, we'll open the work session meeting at four.
O two.
O two. And do we have, do we have an audience?
No, there's nobody joining us. There's two people on YouTube, but I'm one of them.
Okay, so let's go, let's go to agenda items. We have minutes of August twenty sixth work session. Presented, Lois got them out and Julia got them out and I had no problem with the material that looked good to me. So we have a motion to approve those minutes of the August twenty sixth, the twenty twenty work session.
They'll move.
I second that motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna go to discuss open space really quick. Did she ever get back to you with that?
Uh, Louise has not yet contacted me, so if it's okay, I'd ask that you table this again and hopefully we'll be up here by next.
Just remind me when I look at it and I, and I go back, don't go back. I like to nominate, okay, sure. Okay, we'll table that motion. We'll table that item.
We, we do have.
I would like to say something before we table this.
Just as long as we're recording this.
Okay.
This is the poster that we made up when we passed the bond initiative for clean water. This is my daughter.
She was about one. She just turned five and we haven't done anything yet.
All right.
But at least now we have a full committee.
The falls is still there.
The falls are still.
Yeah.
That's, that's how long it's been. But we're in, we're in a good position. We did it. We had, we had the referendum on and we had a great vote. And then your mom talked very well about that and helped us out with it. And I think it was almost eighty percent of the electorate in Smithfield, Kansas.
It was impressive.
I think it was because of that poster.
Probably.
It was. I had it at one of these sites, one of our bowling places. Everybody said, oh, whose child is that?
I'm gonna put in my office, it's now become historic. We'll go to the Smithfield Archives.
Oh, put it in the Smithfield Library. Okay.
We don't have a Smithfield Library. Now it's the middle.
Well, it's the.
Library of the Smithfield Archives.
Uh, okay, so we, we did have a submittal from, uh, it was Brian Smith from Barry Ice's Associates in regard to our wellness park. Phase one improvement, so we're moving on that and I thank you, Robert, for your work on that. And he is, his submittal is thirty thousand five hundred dollars and that's for pretty much to do everything we need done. Including putting specs together, going out to beds.
The whole works. So we will be the project manager. Isn't the portion of it covered by the grant?
I'm hoping. Yeah, Jose. And Julia, I didn't get back to you yesterday, but I, I think Brian Smith is the guy that we, we'll be talking to about the Marshall's Falls.
Okay, I can reach out and direct him.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make it, I'll, I'll make that motion that we approve the payment to Barry Ice's. The amount of thirty thousand thou- thirty thousand five hundred dollars. We have a second all in favor.
Aye.
I'm not sure what this is. Motion to approve unauthorized signatures on the, the bank resolution of the new government municipalities' money market account with First National Bank.
Yeah, I already know about that one.
That is actually tied into the First National Bank stuff, so if you wanna table that also, Suzelle can explain, well Suzelle, I think she can explain when they want Suzelle in here.
Okay, sure. Look, we'll table that temporarily. And a motion to approve payment of the firm confidential investigation, an invoice for additional amount of monies. Initially, Jacob, I knew you were concerned and noted it, do we have to, does it have to be that much? And I called him and he said he's gonna knock off an entire day Thursday with about nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Wow, sounds good.
So, yeah, at least it's, it's reasonable and, and he's gonna have some good stuff with us.
Certainly.
Be surprised. I don't know where it'll go.
Yeah.
At least we're doing our due diligence. Okay. So having said that, I guess I'll make the motion that we approve that payment.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And of course, Skantex has been, as everybody has said and noted, they've been very cooperative with us in that latest bill. They earned, they earned it and it's professional services, an invoice of seven hundred and fifty dollars and.
And then they also won a hundred and twenty-five for additional service, but I think this, this one finishes out what they're doing currently.
Yeah, okay. And then like where Felisa was helping, helping us all out.
Right, yeah, we were talking, I was talking with her and Sarah. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the Skantex proposal there then.
I'll second the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have bills to be paid. Let's do that now. Took a look at them vague, quickly, quickly, quickly and, and. Talk to him here. Robert again. Jacob, I guess really you took a look at them also and signed off on them.
As did Julia. She looked at them too.
Good.
Two eyes, maybe. Four eyes. There's absolutely nothing to really.
Yeah, no, everything was good. The only new thing is time limit though. Ed got new business cards. He ran out of the old ones, so we got that taken care of.
And then I'll make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And here we are.
Here we are.
Hello.
Hello.
That's me, Brian Dar.
Hi, Brian.
How are you?
Suzelle, there. Ken, I'm the manager for Tannersville for First National Bank of Pennsylvania. And this is Tiffany Kolfovich. She is our treasury management person. Um, and I brought her with me today because that's me after maybe some questions may come up. But more importantly, services you may not have that you could utilize. And before we start, Tiffany, could you spell your last name for me?
Sure, you don't let me have this out.
You guys wanna sit and make yourselves a story with one another?
Yeah.
I made it seem less no easier. This is just some information I put together. We don't have to go over all of this, but I wanted to leave it in time.
Hi, how are you?
All right.
Good to meet you finally.
Brian, nice to meet you. Thank you. Oh, hi, face, I'm, I forget. I just did hand sanitizer too.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say something on Suzelle's behalf. This is the first time we've ever met. We've talked. And she came to us because when I was just inquiring about possible loans to pay for the Marshall's Creek house. I called, what did I say? ESSA, I called Citizens. And just at Frank Cephalis' suggestion, I called Suzelle at Frank National and I just found the response to be lightning fast, I would say. And also really knowledgeable about what we were talking about and what we needed and that just started this whole conversation.
I thank you all for allowing us to come. It's been a few weeks, so I appreciate the patience. Of course, I run a branch and sometimes staff can get short handed. So at least tonight I got to be here. I think it's beneficial for you to hear what you have to offer. More importantly, how we can combine the relationship if you're moving forward with the purchase of the real estate. Um, it's beneficial for you to see your money market rates that we offer as well as the services. So Tiffany, your handout, if you would take and go over some of the points that are on it?
You're welcome to sit up here.
Okay, that's to make this.
Surely the seats are more comfortable.
Sure. Well, thank you again for having us. My role here with the bank is all the balance whistles that go with our deposit accounts. And a large part of what I do is working with our municipal clients as well as businesses and nonprofits. So what I put together for you is just some basic information. There's really just a handful of accounts that suit our municipality. Um, I noticed, um, we did review at least one month of statements, you're not earning interest today. And that's.
At, at one particular.
I, I only looked at one, one account.
Yeah, sure.
It was one account, but there's two ways we typically do them. If you want products and services, then typically we would ask you to keep a compensating balance. So that would mean we wouldn't pay interest on that, but we'd use those balances to offset your services. Because rates so low, you know, you can go through it two ways. You could earn interest and pay for services. So I, what I outlined to you is just kind of the basic services, the basic costs, just so you could see what some of the options are. And I wasn't sure if you used any services today or not. From an account standpoint, I know we had talked a little bit about money market account. That rate is point six zero. And then I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I suspect that might come down.
Oh, wow.
And then on, on a checking account, we do have a totally free checking account for our municipalities and that runs point two five percent. And that has no minimum balance and no activity limit.
So if, if money were put into that account, general fund type money, the daily operation, which is, as you know, it can be pretty busy. A lot of activities that would, there'd be no charge for that?
There isn't. At least on that, that, it's called the preferred interest checking. It's outlined in there for you. So, yeah, that doesn't have activity limits. Or minimum balance requirements, so if it dips down at certain times of the year. And that's ideal, you know, for like any type of account and it's fully collateralized by Act seventy-two. I gather all the products I outlined for you.
It's always nice to hear that. Collaborate.
I can practice a little bit to help you understand. We do have many townships, boroughs. And we bank County Monroe to some extent. So we have strong relationships in the community in Monroe County.
Are you, are you headquartered in, in Monroe County?
Our headquarters is out of Hermitage, Pennsylvania. We're a Pennsylvania-based bank, over a hundred and fifty-six years old. So we have a strong presence in the state of Pennsylvania. My branch is literally the only branch within thirty miles circumference of the next branch, which would be probably Scranton or Clark Summit. However, that does not stop us from doing banking with anybody. I have customers that are seventy-five miles away. It doesn't matter because we have remote capture. Tiffany can go over some of the other services to continue with that, but it has not stopped our relationship from growing out of the area. I have customers all the way in Pittsburgh. Even though we have branches in Pittsburgh, this branch has a relationship with the customer. Yeah, it helps a whole lot to, to services, more important than anything else in the bank, and that's what I provide to the customers.
Are you, you're in Tannersville? You're not at the old Merchants Plaza, are you?
No, we're directly across the street from Pocono Township.
Oh, sure, yeah. Okay, I just.
And the other reason I outlined that technology before you asked, it's been very busy the last six months, which is, it's on the machine today. Not everybody can say that they've been so busy. But customers in municipalities and businesses and customers, they're looking for efficiencies. So, you know, for a while there are branch doors that are locked, you know, whether it's easy to make deposits, that's where the technology comes into play. You can scan your deposits. They may available up until eight o'clock and I don't know what, you know, if any technology you're using. Um, so that's one key thing. And then a lot of things are being done electronically now, so there's some information on web banking and ACH origination. I'm kind of glad I've done like a record because I've, I've done this field so many times about, you know, the technology and, and how much easier it makes your life. So that's again, the other reason we wanted to outline some of the different services we have.
I don't know what we do now, but I assume you can do electronic deposits. I don't know what we do.
Right from a laptop, literally with a little scanning machine that has it.
Yep, we have one of them.
You do use that, okay.
Right, we're, we're doing that.
Okay.
It took a while, but we, we mastered it.
You get spoiled pretty quickly.
You hate to get cash.
Yeah.
Isn't that funny? Somebody comes in and it's a cash payment. You can't scan it.
And you know, the interesting thing is I've worked with several municipalities, actually somewhere before this even happened. Who for security reasons didn't wanna handle cash anymore. Up widely popular initially, but customers get used to it and that's likely more so the security, but now, you know, in the new world. It's also, you think about the sanitary reasons why you might know whether you had really cash. Um, so that, I've, I've helped several municipalities with that. Um, and the one way we're able to do that is we both issue our own credit cards and we have our own acceptance program. Do you accept cards today?
We do now online, um, with Easy Net Pay through Paymer Enterprises.
Okay.
Where sewer authorities use.
And you pass that fee on to the, the consumer?
Yes, they, they pay a service fee.
Okay, so you're ahead of the game then. We have a similar program. It's unique for us to have an in-house program on both sides.
Yeah.
Of that transaction, most banks refer you off to some third party. Um, so I mentioned that we have that and again, that is an in-house program too. Um, I didn't want to barge you with services, but like I said, what I need to do is outline for you some of the products that might be of interest. Preferred interest checking and public funds money market we talked about. And then the rest of this, a lot of this is boilerplate. So I talked about statements. They cut it once in and they're available online. Almost have to use online banking, especially in A and I said it's your best defense against fraud. So that's information in that is included on the bottom of page four. We refer to that as ExecuBank. And then on page five, add a little bit more about what all you can do through that platform, including ACH origination if you wanna pay vendors electronically. So I'm assuming you require two signatures on your text. Again, I've had a lot of conversations initially. We're not all in the same building. We don't wanna be in the same building. Signing texts becomes cumbersome when, when you're not there and in such meetings. So that's available to you as well.
Electronic signatures, so that we could actually electronically pay our invoices.
Yeah, so if you electronically pay invoices, it's done, still done under dual control. And one person would upload that transaction, another approved it, but you're not chasing someone with a paper check ask and then missing a check. So we've done a lot of implementation over the last five months of those types of services, all integrated within web banking.
That'd be, that'd be something we don't do now, Julia. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then I should point out, you know, we have all these products and services, but I also have an amazing support team. There's one group of people, all they do is support the products and services that I sell and three other people like me. So you're not getting a generic call center, you're not getting bounced around, so if your image are smoking or you forgot your password or what's this error mean? Or I forgot how to send a wire, it's the same group that answers your questions, no matter what they might think.
Okay, so and that, that call would be made to whoever you direct this to, but would you?
I have a toll free number. They happen to sit in Johnstown, Pennsylvania, but they're readily available. They answer their phone, they're friendly and they're super knowledgeable. I joke, you people smarter than me back in May. Two of the people in that department have been here thirty plus years each.
I have, I have the opportunity to work with them in the past, troubleshooting problems and they are very good.
Good to hear, thanks.
Oh, it's my first.
I've worked with a municipality before, but you don't. I have a, a small background.
Now, I think it's been the bank our size, you know, we have products, you know, like this idea of, what's in here? Um, so it's always been a niche of ours. Bigger banks, smaller banks, they want your deposits, they don't want your deposits. Bigger banks, smaller banks, they want your deposits, they don't want your deposits, they're charging fees or waiving fees. Our structure, our product structure has been the same, which makes my job kind of easy, between that and having good salespeople behind these support people. But you can tell we're kind of passionate about what we do and the products we have. And we think it's the right fit, and just the glimpse that I saw on these their efficiencies and certain, perhaps additional interest and more services.
Often the interest would be pretty...
Usually about a million dollars or so in that account at any given time.
It fluctuates, but as Jacob said, we'll get into some areas where there'll be a couple of good hits at it, but we've never been below four hundred, five hundred.
Right.
That's what Tiffany is beneficial for this purpose, because she can see what your lowest point of balance should be. And anything above that, to help offset fees. So you have the option, you can have no fee, or you can have analysis and have fees, but also have the interest on the other funds that are sitting there to offset...
And I didn't include information on that, so I didn't want to muddy the water, but yes, that's, you know, if you have enough balances, you have the best of all worlds. Use some of the balances to offset fees, and the rest of the balance we can sweep out and earn interest on it.
So offset fees, now what would those fees be?
So let's say you want it web banking, and you wanted ACH, and you need it to be able to scan deposits, there is typically a fee for that. And that's probably why you're not earning interest today. We would structure it, so let's say you want to just those three services. The break even might be, I'm just going to make up a number, let's say three hundred thousand, because the earnings credit is tiered. So at that point, you get the highest tier. And keep in mind, again, earnings credit just helps offset fees, it's not true interest. So then what happens is as long as you keep that break even balance, everything above and beyond will sweep out and earn interest. So that you're not manually managing, you know, moving into money market, out of the money market. We do all of that legwork for you. And then when you go to reconcile, because Julie's probably thinking, what? When you reconcile, you ignore the ins and the outs. Remind the two ending balances reconcile like you always would.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, I appreciate it.
Sir, do you mind muting yourself? It's Guy Miller.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Guy, do you mind muting your microphone, Guy?
Yeah, I apologize for that.
So I guess what we're saying then is, is we have a, even in this atmosphere, in the conditions we're all living through, we're fairly healthy in this particular account, at this particular bank. Just that we're looking to do our due diligence, and Robert said that conversations with you, that you'd be well worth talking to you to see how we can take care of ourselves and our citizens also.
Is there an account, Jacob, also in the township that has, you're quite familiar that you took up, kind of rounded off? Is there other accounts as well?
There's about a dozen.
Yeah, I figured it's not typical for... So earnings in the general fund account with a sweep as Tiffany talked about, it would probably be beneficial to see a larger month statement. And is there any fees at all right now? Because we saw an account that had no fees, but not earning our interest.
Right, I'm guessing that was just the general fund. There's like a fair amount of other funds in there, some of which are small. We talked in executive session that now it's public, but to consolidate some of those, given that some of them are even a few hundred dollars that can just go into the general fund.
Yeah, that was, our earning firm actually strongly recommend we do that.
And when you're opening new accounts, that's the best time to look and say, okay, the way we did it wasn't the best way. What can we consolidate? Is there a better way to do it? Is there a different type of account that would work?
This is new money, so that's good. It's not like...
When we're looking at a township and looking at the accounts, I'm very familiar with some of the accounts that you have, because you have road, you have different maintenance and things that you need. When you look at those accounts right now, what is earnings for any of the accounts that money is just sitting in reserve?
In this particular instance, that we're not getting any interest.
Right, the other account, the reserve one, that's at people's security, and that's half a percent. It used to be one percent. And there's one point eight million, and that's to create the general obligation bond.
And there is a quote in here on the public funds money market at point six oh currently.
Yeah, we saw that, yeah.
The earnings credit, do you have to actually take the statement maybe that Julie provides to us with a larger...
And I could certainly come up with, here's what your break even would be, now knowing kind of some of the services you're interested in. Most of what I wouldn't be able to tell is deposited items. It actually looks like a pretty full activity account.
The general fund account, maybe?
Yeah, so do you do any collections here?
There's a heck, there's a heck of a lot of activity in that, it's all of it.
This one account, since what we got, the statements that we received, it was a low month statement. It didn't have a lot of volume to it.
Oh, oh, it's got, it's got everything we do comes out of that account. Every single, pretty much invoice we pay. As we said, the other account that we have pretty much is collateral insurance because of a bond, we have outstanding bond.
Okay. And I'm seeing there's a transfer to another account, and I only have, you know, I can have some limited information, but it's nothing dangerous.
Yeah, my guess is that that's probably to the parks or the highway fund. Both highway fund, obviously, we want to keep separate, because that is liquid fuels money in that, and I think that's a pligot.
Thank, liquid fuels is pligot, yeah.
Right, and then ESA also holds the parks fund. But that'll likely be consolidated into the general fund since it's...
And our goal in that money market has been to be competitive with Pligot, so we're very well aware that we're higher than them, and that's not accidental. That's probably one of our main competitors is Pligot. And that hasn't been consistent either, because they haven't been for years, and now they are, and then they weren't. So, but we try to, try to be ahead of Pligot so that you don't have to... A lot of our municipalities will be moving money back and forth unless it's not the bank's benefit or yours for our efficiencies go.
And there's a couple of caveats that come with the services we provide for the account. One, because of relationship you would build with us with the general fund and/or reserves, I would provide if you needed checks. Now, if you're doing computerized checks, this order I could provide, and then I don't know if you utilize an outside company. Most municipalities do, they order their own checks. But the deposit tickets and the endorsement stamps, that's all on the bank. Because the first order is like two hundred and fifty dollars through the company that we have to use, Clark American, just on one account. So you wouldn't have to be concerned about those fees whatsoever. Our branch just use it on.
Right, because Lynn presently prints the checks from QuickBooks, so she's got a stack.
No, she's got stacks, and she does like the bank does, we have just plain paper and we just print them ourselves. The other, maybe talking point, the fact that, yes, the Sale Township is located a distance from the branch. Cash deposits, they always have more than one bank. What I've been doing with some of the other municipalities, they still have one account where they'll make deposits to that is cash. And then they just transfer it over to the general fund when they need to by check. And you would still need a relationship to handle the cash unless you have somebody that's willing to drive up to the branch, which... They make depository services, but that wouldn't be advisable for safety reasons.
Well, amen, right, and that's just...
So you always have more than one relationship with the bank because of the services that have to be combined together. Again, with the distance for us, I can deal with a customer all the way out in Utah remotely and never have to worry about it, but they don't have cash.
Right.
So that's how we resolve that.
That'd be a night deposit, I think. Okay, I think I actually understand most of what you've just said. And it seems like it's very practical.
May I ask where we are at with the township decision on the purchase of the property? Because there are three items that we need to, the loan documents for signing. Regardless if you move forward or not, I'm not committed to signing anything, but I still need those three items. Where are we at with those? So actually, that is item D. So if you guys are done talking about the services that the bank offers, we can shift on to item D. Is that okay?
We have a motion here to approve and authorize signatures in the bank resolution of the new government municipalities' money market account with this name, okay?
Okay, what's, what do you think? Can you explain that to me, what that is? What are we doing there?
It's a depository account, point six oh. Public funds money market account, reserve account. It's a way to begin our relationship, because it's part of the loan requirement to have a relationship with Missale Township as well. So I provided signatures or information, I have Frank's poly signature if you are in a motion to move forward. I have this information here, as well as Julie has a copy as well. And I've brought checks with me.
Do we have any of our money?
Yeah, and that's okay. Well, there's deposit tickets in here first of all.
No way to find you.
Yeah.
So what we're saying then is that this would be a beginning, if you will, in our relationship. And we would do that by getting everything even. We don't have to take action, but we have to, we should get everything in order, the resolution, signatures. So that when we do it, and we decide that we're going to go into it, it would be into a money market at point six oh.
This is about tied to the loan whatsoever.
Right, yeah, we're not talking loans. So, and then is there a minimum on that? No, not at all. And at point six oh, I really don't know. We looked at the rates and actually Julia did a little work for us several months ago. At that time, we decided we...
Point six is probably where it tops out.
Probably, I would imagine.
What'd you say, Jacob?
I said, I said point six is probably where it tops out. I looked at a couple of banks, too. Even for myself, it's... Well, I certainly don't have a million dollars to put in my money market accounts, but...
About all your Tesla stuff.
Yes. Okay, so then that, do we have that in front of us now, so we can act on that tonight, right?
Yeah, I actually have the original documents with me. But I put Jacob, Brian, and Robert as signers on it. But I also have the treasurer signing, too, because on the entity authorization for deposit agreement, we have to have all the board members here, part of the board. So I put all four of you on the depository agreement.
Including the three of us and Frank.
Right, yeah, because he's on our existing stuff.
You already have Frank on there, I thought something.
Probably see him all the time.
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
So we need to make the motion here, just to authorize this, even though we're signing it, we still have to make a motion.
Well, it's...
I have it, I have the depository part resolution.
It's not a resolution, and our resolution's done.
Yeah, this is separate from the loan requirement.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve and authorize signatures of the bank resolution of the new government Missale's money fund money market account with First National Bank. Without a breath.
In all favor. So the next step really is that we would be in touch with, well, we'll get this in order, then we would be in touch with you. And the very first thing we would do is establish, we would deposit monies. And we'll talk about that, we'll talk about it with Julia, myself, Jacob, Robert, and Lynn. And we get that, and that's the beginning of our relationship, okay?
Right.
Julie, then, just to confirm, you also need a copy of the line, uh, license, but for...
Correct, okay.
But I can't leave, you need a copy of your license.
You have mine, right?
You have mine, oh, okay.
And Julie, this is for your case, to keep, that's the actual option.
All right, this is just yours, this is very eyes.
Jacob, you signed this, I don't know, you didn't?
Oh, yeah, Frank and I, we both have a kind of similarity.
And if you choose to put out your driver's license, I'll just make a picture of it, and I can download it to myself on my email server.
Uh, sure, yeah. Does it have to be a current?
You wear that you're on camera, so don't show the camera your driver's license, okay?
That's right, well... Not at all?
Uh, I brought copies of that.
Yeah, double check, please.
Uh, two people on, get one more sticker, you were signing on this page two at the bottom.
Oh, all right.
And a driver's license.
There we go.
Thank you. And that is the signature card, I have. Okay, do you need a copy of that, Julie?
Uh, it would probably be good for us to have our records.
Yeah, I'll scan it and fill this, please.
All right, we're off to a good start. And I guess I personally thank you for taking the time to be here, and I know how busy everybody really is.
Thank you, I can work you from home, it's a pleasure to get out of my house. To be quite honest with you.
Well, you know, I've been working quite a bit from home myself, I figured that, at my age...
I can tell you that I was at home myself for thirteen weeks working from the laptop. But I mean, focused seventy percent of my role is out here with the public. So you can imagine how hard this is as well.
Certainly.
We're used to being out with everybody, now we can't.
Shaking hands, too.
I did, I did. And it's just, it's in my nature.
It's your nature.
This is the fun part of the job, it's on the paperwork dissuading.
So thank you all.
We appreciate you having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Looks like you brought some sunshine.
I love it, I love it. I said, it's rare, rare.
I used to have an office up there at Merchants Plaza, but the courier link, is it still there? Do you know where that is?
Um, I know where, yes, I do. Actually, the post office is here. Attorney Durning and Warden's, they're on the second floor, and the courier link is down underneath.
I used to run that, yeah.
Did you?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, small world.
Yeah, well, I know this much about Tannersville, different weather compared to what, compared to Shogworth. And then Mount Pocono, forget it.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny, when I'm in Spooko County, so there's like a couple different zones I go through till I get here. We sure appreciate your time, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You too.
Thank you, you closed our meeting, there's not much else to say.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, well, before we begin to announce our executive session, that the board did hold an executive session today, September second, from three thirty-six to five thirty-six, to discuss terms and conditions of employment at Smithfield Township, and strategy negotiations related to our union contract.
You meant three fifty-six, right?
Uh, yes, three thirty-six to three fifty-six. I'm sorry for whatever I actually said, that is what I meant.
Okay. Okay.